Everybody, how you doing? So we're going to call the meeting to order. We have 7:02. All right, so for tonight's meeting, welcome to East Greenbush Central School District Office for our board meeting. Tonight, attendance for board members, we have everyone attendance missing right now. Ms. Massey, I don't see her right now, but I see other board members and Mr. Mann will not be here to do a work commitment, so hopefully Ms. Massey can join us shortly. Everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up? All right, with that, could you please join me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to our student council from Columbia. I see Katie and Lily are joining us. Hi guys, how you doing? Who wants to start?
I'll start, how are you?
How are you?
Good, thank you. So so far, we don't have a ton of meetings. We haven't had a ton of meetings or a ton of updates since last time that we presented at a Board of Education meeting. So last time, we did talk about how we would be creating an Instagram so that senior students could post what their plans are for next year. And the Instagram we created in place of the College Acceptance Day has really taken off, and we have tons of posts on there of seniors talking about their plans for the next few years. And this has really helped to boost the virtual participation throughout the school, and it seems to be going really great. So we have, of course, the students, some of their families and parents, some underclassmen, teachers following that Instagram, and it really just helps boost morale and show what's going on and just really emphasizes how hard everyone's worked, and it keeps those accomplishments from going unnoticed. And again, if anyone would like to follow that Instagram account, the handle for it is futures.ofcolumbia grads. And we want to emphasize that we are encouraging all students to submit their plans for next year. So whether that is college, the military, trade school, or going straight into the workforce, we really would love to hear from everyone because everyone has so much to be proud of and has worked very hard, and we'd love to see what everyone's doing next year. Thank you.
Great, thanks Lily. Katie, anything?
Yeah, so we just wanted to give a quick shout out to all of the various videos the CHS staff has been making, such as the math departments, because they really helped to bring up Students Week, and we're super grateful for this little morale boost. And then tomorrow, we will be having our first virtual Student Council meeting. We just wanted to say that, as always, everyone is welcome, and hopefully we'll come up with some new ways to find participation with that. That's it.
Great, thanks Katie. Good luck with your meeting. All right, guys, take care, thank you. We're now going to move to the public forum, and as you know, that under this virtual meeting setting, we are doing emails, but I will read our public content communication. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state directly their name and address, affiliation with the district or business, and they will require that for the email. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be open to them. The board president will conduct the forums during inefficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered derogatory or stigmatizing are prohibited, declared out of order. We'll now turn over, Mr. Edson, do you have any email communication you'd like to share?
Yes, I do. Right before the board meeting, actually a little while before the board meeting, we did receive an email from a parent. The parent's name is Melissa Ioti. She has a fourth grader and a sixth grader in the school district. Her email expression contains concerns regarding the distance learning experience that her children are experiencing at this point. She has a concern that she has brought to the principal, and she would like to see more use of the technology, including video counseling with her children. She has some questions that we need to research. I refer the email to Mrs. Barker for follow up. I will follow up with Mrs. Barker tomorrow as well as contact the parent directly. But we have provided a lot of tools for our teachers to use, and we are experiencing some differences, and we are encouraging our parents to contact the teachers directly and then the principal. But in this case, those steps have been followed, so I will intervene and I will talk to the principal tomorrow to see what solutions exist. And I appreciate Mrs. Ioti, I appreciate Mrs. Ioti expressing her concern, and we'll get back to her.
Any else?
At this point, those are the only public comments that we've received.
Anybody in the audience there? Administrators, anybody? Comments? No? Okay, now move to the board forum. Board members, any comments you'd like to make at this time?
I actually would like to make a comment. I was out walking in my neighborhood over the weekend, and I can say that we ran into some parents who are very excited about the Janay Parade that is going to be happening tomorrow. They're really looking forward to it. It was the talk of the neighborhood as we were out strolling with the dogs. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Janay teachers and all of our other staff who have done so much to keep our families connected and try to connect with our students through these different times.
Board members, anything else? Any other comments?
I have to give a shout out because Green Meadow did theirs on Friday, and I took the day off so I could be there, and it was so emotional and amazing. The teachers were just thrilled to see the kids, and the kids were so excited, so thank you again. And they had a great one for golf, for the virtual one, that was really awesome as well. And like we talked about earlier, the math videos, and it's just amazing to see the community come together during this and really show their appreciation for each other. So thank you very much for all that that you guys do over there for that.
Thanks, Michelle. I think I can echo that, too. We haven't had a Green Meadow elementary student in many years, but it still brought a lot of emotion back when we saw all the teachers who are still at Green Meadow, and I see Mr. Garab's on the call, so I want to thank the staff. And also, I think just staying connected through the parades and the videos is just so important. As our staff learn more and more how to become proficient with video and Google meets and the tools that are out there, we'll see more and more connectivity with our students and our parents and our community, just as we are today through our virtual meeting. So again, thank you to everyone for continuing to learn and to continue to reach out and make these opportunities possible for our families and kids, and also for the staff to stay connected amongst themselves. Any other last comments, board members? We'll move to discussion items. The first one, from Jeff, sorry, did you have anything for the support report?
I did want to just mention that Red Mill's Parade was postponed today because of the forecast for rain, and sure enough, it was right on target. It rained for quite a period of time today. I believe it's rescheduled for Thursday, but we'll check the website. Red Mill is also planning a parade this week. It's just now rained out today.
Yeah, it's actually probably snowed out there.
It's raining.
So yeah, very unusual weather. We'll now move to the discussion items. The first item for discussions are 2020, 2021 ongoing budget discussions. Mr. Edson, do you want to hear that? Or I'll start? Okay. Mr. Edson's joined. Can everyone hear me? All right, very good. So the rather unique circumstances, the district is still in the process of developing its budget recommendations through the Board of Education. I say unique because typically this time of year, we're out at PTO meetings, sharing a budget plan with our groups. We've attended town board meetings. We are planning, once we've determined the budget, that the board will recommend to the community to conduct those forums virtually this year. One of the missing significant pieces of information we have is the date of the budget vote. Through the state's action, the vote date was postponed from its typical third Tuesday in May to sometime after June 1st. And that particular date has not been determined yet. As of an hour ago, I received an email from the State Superintendent's Council, and they do not, they still do not have any information about when the specific budget vote date and board election date will occur. Additionally, because we are practicing social distancing and people are supposed to be six feet apart, and the majority of us are directed to stay home, the state is considering options for voting, which could include everyone votes through a mail-in paper ballot. But that has not yet been determined either. And so we're moving forward, just looking at the potential for our expenses and our revenues for next year. But we don't know when the vote is, and we don't know what timelines we're obligated to in regard to public notification as of this meeting. However, I provided the board, and this is on board docs, with an update as of our last meeting regarding the proposed budget for the 2020-21 school year. You may recall that we were estimating about $1 million, $50,000 gap between projected expenses and revenues. Mr. Edson has worked to sharpen this pencil and looked very closely at revenues that we might have available. He is recommending, me and I am recommending to the board, that we make use of an existing reserve. The board has been very prudent in setting aside monies in the past from unspent budget. And we have approximately $5.9 million in employee retirement reserve. That is a specific reserve for monies that can be used to pay for our post-retirement obligations for certain employees. We have ERS, and we have TRS. TRS covers the teachers and the administrators. All of the other employees' retirement costs are affiliated with ERS. So we're recommending a transfer of $900,000, come out of that reserve to cover a portion of our ERS expenses for next year. That will close the gap. Additionally, we try to be conservative about estimating our revenues because we don't always know exactly the amount that will come in. It's somewhat of a fluid situation, but we are able to recommend an adjustment to an aid category for which we are reimbursed for prescription portion of certain retirees' health insurance, I believe it's the spousal coverage. We estimated in our initial budget review that those, or excuse me, in last year's budget, that those costs were approximately $107,000. We were able to increase that estimate by about $200,000, which will close the gap. We are also cautious about what may happen to state aid. I think if you've been following the news, you know that Governor Cuomo was meeting with the president this afternoon, talking about federal help. I left the House, and they were still talking about the possibility of a fourth stimulus bill that would involve providing monies for local and state governments. It's something that is just beginning to be initiated as a discussion. But we are recommending a budget of about $99.8 million. We have been able to review our pilot agreements as well as our other categories of revenue. We are pleased that at this point in the budget, to offer a budget that has a 1.52% increase to the tax levy, which is under the New York State allowable tax cap, and is the lowest tax levy increase we would propose in the last five years. There's a summary memo from Larry, catch, due to discussion item portion of board docs. We also want to have some discussions with the board regarding the specific items that are still included in our budget recommendation. We refer to those as the Tier A items. We feel that we have a tricky and difficult balancing act, given the fact that the governor has told us that there will be certain measurement periods in which the state's budget director can reduce the aid received by school districts. That first measurement period occurs April 30th. We know that the state revenues are going to be significantly short in terms of sales tax and income tax through the coronavirus impact on the economy. However, we also recognize that some of the needs of our students during this period in which schools could potentially be shut down, although there's online learning going on, for a pro, let's say, in the event that the schools are closed for the rest of the year. And even if not, there will be some students who will be coming back needing additional support. So we want to be sensitive to the class sizes, given the fact that our enrollment is growing in the district, and the board has seen those enrollment projections, as well as the fact that some of our students who receive special education services as well as mental health counseling may be in some very difficult circumstances right now, and may be coming back to school, whether it be this spring or whether it be in September. We want to make sure that there's room in the budget to be able to accommodate any federal monies that we might receive, but also to be able to address the staffing and the supports and services that we might need, be able to provide for the students, particularly in light of the potential impact of what's going on right now with kids learning at home. So the Tier A items include two additional elementary sections. One would be at Citizen Janay, and that is based on an enrollment projection for K5 for next year, an additional section at Red Mill. You may recall that the district developed a transition plan for its attendance zones. We have more students going into Red Mill next year who reside in what would be former belltop areas. We're projecting five sections of kindergarten at Red Mill, and also the need for an additional section at Citizen Janay. Additionally, the mental health needs of our children have been a subject of a lot of discussion within the board and within our community. There was a need prior to this period where we've been impacted by coronavirus, kids staying home. We anticipate that the need may be even greater when the kids return to school. And so if we can make it work, I would recommend that we include the social worker in the final budget. A board member has asked me to look at existing staffing and whether existing staffing could be used to provide the technology support. I planned that I would do that, and I will give a report to the board after we have finished studying that option. Additionally, we could probably forego the additional furniture for next year. The Questar Bosse Stack Service is a service that provides our district with ensuring that our claims for certain special education services that are reimbursable are managed well and filed accurately. We receive revenue based on those claims back into the district's budget. We also would get aid on that service through Questar Bosse's. Additionally, we've included in the Tier A some things that we know we're going to need to do, such as the transponder reviews that we're doing of our busing service in light of the committee to look at the high school start time and also sexual harassment training, which is required by New York State law. I think we're all feeling the impact of student activities being limited right now. I believe that the expense of an additional modified cross-country team, if we can swing it, is well worth the limited cost because it has a huge impact on the kids. So all in all, including the Tier A recommendations, which I just summarized, the budget would be $99.78 million. That is about a 4% increase in the budget, but only a 1.52% increase in the proposed tax levy. The worry that I have is that our district may have to wait a while to determine whether or not any federal monies will flow to the state. So we may on April 30th and probably likely see a significant impact to our state aid, but I would want to be cautious about making cuts now, only to learn that perhaps later in the summer or into the fall, we receive resources and would be able to adjust our class sizes. It may be too late, would be disrupting kids. I would not be recommending maintaining all of our programs and services and in fact adding some for the enrollment or the needs of guests. If we were not in a situation where we are a fiscally stable district, we have adequate reserves and fund balance to manage any issues with cash flow that may occur as a result of not knowing what our state aid or federal aid might ultimately be. But I want to keep our momentum going forward. I want to make sure that we're able to respond to student needs when they come back to school, and I want to make sure that we are continuing to be able to meet the board's goals with obviously a sensitivity to the revenue side of the budget. There is some, some needs within our region and other districts whereby they may be more reliant on state aid because of the wealth factors involved in those districts, so they may not be in a similar position as East Greenbush is right now. But as I said earlier, we do have rainy day funds, and certainly we are projected to have a rainy day, thanks to the board and Mr. Edson's very tight fiscal management. We're going into this unknown situation, having some resources to be able to deal with it, perhaps in a way that will preserve programs and continue our momentum forward. Mr. Edson, anything to add?
I want to talk about the May possibility for adoption.
Would you go ahead and do it? Okay. So we have a board meeting scheduled for May 6th, and we'll be receiving our first information regarding whether or not the state will reduce our state aid on April 30th. We want to be able to respond to that information and prepare further information for the board to take a look at on May 6th. We also want to be able to prepare for a budget vote, and we would like the board to adopt the budget during the May next couple of weeks. So we are asking if the board would consider a special board meeting on May 13th so that between now, May 6th and May 13th, we can examine further our own budget, we can take a look at what might be happening with state and/or the possibility of federal help. Mr. Edson is taking a look at how we're doing this year in terms of the fund balance projection, but we want to be able to say to the board, this is what we think we should do with the budget, and have the board adopt the budget on May 13th. Because working back 45 days from which is our typical period, if the vote is somewhere between June 1st and June 9th, we have to get the word out to the public, because it's going to be a challenge to get the public to communicate about the budget with the public, with all the restrictions in terms of large group attendance and social distancing. So we're asking for some comments on the budget as it stands right now from the board, but also whether or not the board would commit to a May 13 special board meeting primarily for the purpose of adopting the whole budget. So Jeff just summarized, I think I'd like to hear more about your thoughts, board members, on the use of the reserves, number one, the items that Jeff reviewed under the Tier A in the memo, and then lastly, doing a special board meeting on the 13th. And I guess that gives us time to kind of evaluate what happens on April 30th, see what happens, because the current closure order is till May 15th, and hopefully have some more information from the state level. So I'll just throw it out there to the board members, just kind of, for feedback. Ken?
I'm good.
You're good? Deanna? I'll go through my grid. Deanna?
Yes, I'm fine with everything.
Joanne?
I'm good with everything, and I just want to say kudos to you, Mr. Edson, for putting us in a financial position that we do have the reserves to be able to fall back on. Great management of our funds.
Thanks, Joanne. John? Still muted, John. You're good? Okay. Well, guys, thumbs up from John. Karen?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I'm also good, thank you.
Did I get everybody?
You didn't get me, but I'm good with it.
There you are. All right, I lost you in the corner of my grid here. And the same goes for May 13th. We'll put something out there to do that, we'll focus on the budget for that meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you all. We are, we are very sensitive to what is happening in the economy, I just want to add that part. You know, we recognize that there's some people that are really struggling out there. We're trying to get the budget not only from an expenditure side where it needs to be to support the kids, but we're very sensitive to the impact on the taxpayers, and we're trying to get it as low as possible. And right now, we're at 1.52. Again, just to reiterate, that is the smallest tax levy increase proposed in five years, and we are using monies that the public has approved in the past, which we saved, to appropriate towards an expenditure next year, a $900,000 portion of our ERS. So and we're trying to be as transparent about this process as possible with a lot of unknowns. I think that the addition of the social worker, especially, you know, given the, you know, coming back off of what we're currently facing at the middle school is critical. And if you looked at the other document that was attached regarding class sizes, we really want to avoid the combined classes in that kind of large group, because I think we're going to be faced with kind of getting kids acclimated again in the fall to a different way of learning and continue that process that we're in right now. But I think that's important to keep those class sizes as balanced as possible across the different elementary schools as well. Okay? Thank you. Any other comments? If you do have some comments later on, you know, email them to myself or Jeff, and we can discuss them, okay? We still have some time, and you know, it's kind of a fluid situation, but I'm very pleased about where we are right now as a board, as a district, to be able to kind of function for 2021 and as a community. We'll now move to a second discussion item. We have the update on just kind of how things are going on, the continuity of instruction, meals, childcare, and some of the community programs that are in place. I want to start by thanking Mike Leonard, I don't know if Mike is on the meeting or not, Audra DiBacco, and all the volunteers that are contributing to our community food pantry program, which is being run out of Columbia High School. That program is not only helping to replenish the backpack programs at each of the schools that have them, they have been providing for what has become a growing community need. And that is not a requirement of the state that we do that, but it is a great reflection of the generosity of the people in the community. And over there again this week, and the number of people that are showing up at the high school, need food, and the number of people who are contributing to that, including regular families of East Greenbush School District, business owners in East Greenbush, people writing checks, people donating food, people contributing in so many different ways, and it's just really great to see that we are still, we still have a fairly good supply and a great system in place. So I want to thank Mike, and I want to thank Audra and everybody else who's volunteered, and I particularly want to thank the community for continuing to donate to that program. We have been, people have reached out through an email or through just an incidental contact and said, you know, there's a person down there who's really in need, and we've been getting them what they need. I want to appreciate the drivers, Mark Noah, for all the work that they're doing to deliver the food. It's just a real super effort. The student meals program under Phyllis is still going well. We're still serving about 165 to 170 meals with the kids, lunch and breakfast. The staff is doing a great job with that under Phyllis's direction. And the continuity of instruction plan in terms of our online learning plan is going really well. We sent out a guidance document to our teachers and to our parents, it was really well received. And I wanted to give Mr. McHugh, Jim, are you there?
I am.
Okay. I wanted to give Jim an opportunity to, actually, he had it under committee reports, but Jim, why don't you do that now, since I already set you up for that? So why don't you talk? Why don't you talk about some of the guidance? And also, I know we have, we don't have it all ironed out yet. We're working through with our department chairs and some other teachers how we're going to balance the needs of our kids, which are very diverse, with our grading practices for the fourth quarter. We have not come to a final decision yet, but we have a good process going. And I'll ask Jim to talk a little bit about that process. Mr. McHugh?
Sure. Our remote learning guidelines were shared out on April 14th. And that recognized the efforts from all of our stakeholders. It also recognized the diversity within all school districts, not just ours, but in regards to the needs and the abilities of our students and staff to support students during this challenging time. The first remote guideline talked about narrowing, narrowing the curriculum down and just looking at the content and skills that were to be covered from March through the end of the school year, and then really focusing on the essential topics that are really necessary in order to prepare students for the next level. So, you know, a shared priority of preparing students for either the next grade or any courses that are prerequisite for another class. We also talked about implementing teacher-guided learning. And we spoke about the fact that we want the responsibility for educating our students to remain with our teachers. It's a challenge during this time, but we are working towards increasing the amount of teacher-guided learning. We're not opposed to the independent study, but our goal is to provide teacher instruction and support throughout the time period. We talked about parents, really, what we really need from our parents is to help their children stay connected with their teachers and keep them organized, making regular personal connections, maintaining personal connections with our students in order to provide direct instruction and help support their needs. And we talked specifically that this is going to take a variety of forms depending on the teacher's chosen methodology. The methods may include live classes and meetings, streamed classes, pre-recorded lessons, screencast lessons, interactive blogging, and even conference calls. All students are expected to be connecting with their teachers on a regular basis. And then just a reminder that students should be checking Google Classroom in their email at least once a day. Parents are also encouraged to check their students' email in Google Classroom if it's used. We talked about providing support during this time that special education teachers are working with their students', general ed teachers, and instructional, on the instructional modalities and accommodations. But other support services will be delivered by teletherapy wherever possible. We added an extra, we created an extra email, Molly McGrath, just a reminder for students and families seeking non-emergency mental health and support. They can email that. Our staff is monitoring that on a regular basis. You know, a lot of the discussions were around equity, you know, the access and the level of support that our students are receiving during this time, and academic integrity. You know, we, we've encouraged our teachers all along not to formally assess our students during this, you know, it's the third and final marking period in K-5 and the fourth and final marking period in grades 6 through 12. You know, we have over 600 students with an IEP. So the support's definitely during remote instruction is not the same as it is when it's in person. And then we talked about general expectations of schoolwork. You know, grades 1, K through 2, 1 to 2 hours per day, ELA math and other academic areas. And we talked about the special area, teachers providing students with developmentally appropriate activities to explore. Grades 3 through 5, an increase in time commitment, 1 and 1/2 to 2 and 1/2 hours. And then grades 6 through 8, 2 to 3 hours per school day, total of all assigned work, including any virtual class time. And at the high school, 15 to 20 minutes of work per class per day. The total should not be in excess of 4 hours. Again, we stress Google Meet, live or recorded, live streaming, screencasting, emails, phone calls. We put a reminder in there that parents could visit our link on our district webpage, egcsd.org backslash coronavirus to access the most current information and available resources. And then we addressed the assessments, report cards, and grading. At this time, we know that the grades 3 through 8, ELA mathematics and science testing are, have been canceled, as well as the Regents exams. That complicates things in our high school because the Regents exams have been used as 15% of the final grade. So we are working through that. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But for grades 3 through 5, we developed a narrative template for the third and final marking period. And we are encouraging teachers to use all of the student information that they have gathered throughout the entire school year to finish that third and final report card. So it's a narrative that addresses mathematics, reading and writing. And it also provides an additional space for teachers to write any additional comments that they would like to include in that final report. We initially closed the parent portal until we got our heads around how we were going to actually calculate the fourth and final marking period grades through, grades, first grade 6 through 12, as well as how we were going to calculate the final averages. And that will, we met once this week with our department chairs and our building administrators to talk about that. It's not an easy decision. I, just before the board meeting tonight, I received about four emails from the CAPP Region Assistant Superintendents talking about, as if they were, asking if there were any guidance on how to grade for the end of the year. So there's a lot of extenuating circumstances. We know that, you know, we have students that are currently working to help support the family during this time. So their ability to engage in the remote instruction may not be the same as some other students. We start talking about parental support at home. We talk about academic integrity. And we have encouraged our teachers not to formally grade anything during this remote teaching and learning time. So we were waiting, you know, we've been living in two-week increments. We keep getting additional notification from SED and from the governor that schools will remain closed, were closed through the 15th. And that, for a little while, played into our decision-making on how we're going to calculate the fourth marking period. The longer we were providing remote instruction, the more likely we started to talk about going to a pass/fail for the fourth marking period. But then we have to determine how the pass/fail in the fourth marking period would impact the final average. So we are working through that. We know that some school districts have already come out and stated that no students are going to fail, everyone's going to be promoted. We have some concerns that we're still talking about. Once we say we go to pass/fail, does the student interest and the student commitment to the remaining days of school stay the same? Or does it diminish going to a pass/fail? We have half-year classes and we have full-year classes. So we have to decide if we want to handle those classes a little differently. We also have honors and high school or courses that have college credit attached to them. So AP classes and classes for college credit. The requirements are set by, by those colleges and universities. So students have to follow whatever those colleges put in place in order to attain that credit. So we still are working through it. There's, the impact is significant, not just for our seniors, but for our underclassmen. It impacts GPA, it impacts class ranking and class averages. So we were meeting again this Friday as a group to decide, to see if we can kind of come to some final decisions regarding how we're going to calculate that final average. But the parent portal is opening back up on Monday, the 27th. So parents can monitor whether or not their, their child is completing work or if the work is incomplete, missing. But, you know, there are other concerns too, where the Regents, if a student did not pass the marking periods, but passed the Regents, they passed the course, that safety net is now removed with no Regents exams. We also have some other safety nets where we've had summer school and we've had credit recovery through Apex. And that's unknown at this time, whether or not we're going to be able to run summer school. So we are making sure that when we make a final decision, that that decision is in the best interest of the students that we serve. Any questions?
I think Mr. Bill has a question of Molly.
Molly, can you hear me? How are you? Just following up what Jim said about the, our special education students and families and teletherapy, can you tell me how it's going with, with the students and the families for those services?
Yeah, so it was kind of a slow start. We, guidance rolled in from the state. They started to relax HIPAA regulations so people would feel comfortable with confidentiality and going live. So we started first to do an opt-in model where families who were comfortable and could facilitate a related service, whether it's OT, PT, speech, even physical therapy sessions. So families opted in. And each provider is now trying to develop a more regular schedule to run related service sessions. Our guidance is that they aren't required to be the full 30 minutes, rather just connect with a student or the family, you know, practice an activity, give some sort of therapy, and then follow up throughout the week.
Great. And do you think instructionally our students are connecting?
Um, it, it's a wide range. So some families are absolutely thrilled, they're loving the sessions, they want to stay on longer, and some are hard to connect with. So it's, it's everywhere in between.
Okay. Great, thank you, Molly. And board members, any other questions regarding the instruction and what's happening in the committee?
So for grading, are we thinking that we might have a different grading policy for the elementary schools versus the middle school or the high school? Will they all have the same?
Elementary is set. Elementary, the third and, the first two marking periods where the grading practices that have always been in place remained. The third and final marking period for the, we've been remote instruction. So we made the decision that that was going to be more narrative in, in format. So it'll provide each teacher the ability to comment on the student's overall progress throughout the whole year. So when students were in the class, as well as when they've been receiving remote instruction, and they'll use all the information from the entire year to produce that third and final report card. 6 through 8, 6 through 8 is a little different than 9 through 12. There's some implications with 9, 12. We've had, we were a little fearful of coming out too soon and, and making a commitment to a grading practice for that fourth and final quarter. If we said that we were going to go to pass/fail, we were concerned that when we're trying to engage our students and keep our students engaged, that maybe that engagement would diminish moving to a pass/fail format too soon. The overall average, that, that gets a little complicated for final grades. In the past, you had the four marking periods, you had a midterm that counted for part of the final average, and then the exam was 15% of that final grade. So Regents exams are canceled, so that takes that 15% away. And one of the, you know, one quarter of the school year, one-fourth of the marking periods has been remote. And we're not really formally assessing students during this fourth marking period. You know, and, and there's a lot of reasons why. You know, like I said, equity to access, equity to support, you know, as, as well as academic integrity, you know. You know, I have two, two children at home receiving remote instruction, one in college and one at the high school. And, you know, I asked a simple question when you're taking some sort of assessment, what stops you from Googling? You know, and so, you know, we want to really stay away from that formal assessment and use the information that's gathered from the other part of the school, parts of the school year.
Thanks, Jim. Any other questions for, for Jim or for Jim?
I just want to say thank you to Jim. Working in a college, we are going through all of these same issues with the grading, the academic integrity, and it's a mess. So I, and we have a much smaller group that we're working with. So I can't even begin to imagine everything that you've been doing. And thank you very much for, you know, such a comprehensive report that you've just given us because I know that that is, it's, like I said, it's a mess.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we know that our, our parents are concerned about that, obviously, for all levels of the high school. Like Jim mentioned, you know, what does it mean for college for next year? What it mean for underclassmen for the future? But again, it's a, it's a fluid situation and we're doing the best we can to address all those concerns on a, on a regular basis. So we'll get there. But this document definitely is a huge help. And I know it's been shared in the region because it is a great document. So thanks to you and the team for putting that together and all the other things that are, are happening for the instruction.
One other item, under the new executive order that came out last week, we are required to provide our essential employees masks when they report to work. So it was Monday of last week, or whenever it was. We heard about the executive order and we started to put plans in place to identify where we can get the masks. And in addition to Marissa Cannon being a human resources expert, she's now the mask star of the East Green Bush School District because she was able to work with Larry and others to get us over 400 masks. So Marissa, if you want to talk a little about the mask count and the procedures that we use to distribute those, you were the one who helped pull it together.
Yeah. So first off, just a thank you to all of our community members that helped with this task in making masks, sewing masks, donating cloth. It was a huge help. Not only did we get the masks very quickly, but they were of wonderful quality. So I just thank the community for all the help with that. As of today, all of our essential CSCA staff, our essential SRP staff, administrators, supervisors, central office staff, we all have been issued a reusable and machine-washable cloth mask. We do have extras that are currently being stored in my office. So I encourage anyone, if they need an extra mask, just email me or call me and I will make certain to get that out to the building. At this time, all of the, the masks have been delivered. And I think everyone currently has been doing a great job wearing the masks when they're in buildings, connecting with the public. I've been hearing a lot of great things. So I thank everyone for, for coming together on that.
Yeah, I think it was a great committee effort. I know that was, you sent the notice out, Jeff, and the committee responded. And it was overwhelming and I, we know how, you know, giving our committee is. And this is just another example of, of that. I guess I had a question earlier, did you?
I just wanted to recognize the Rotary who pledged $500 for the masks. So we're, we're very pleased to receive that donation. Should be coming in a future list.
The check is here, but it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. Murray Morris dropped off a check. I think I gave it to him.
Awesome. Okay. We're thankful. So now we'll move on to committee reports. And Marissa, you're up again.
I just want to provide an update on our search for the Director of Business and Finance or School Business Administrator. We posted this position on March 26th. And the posting was up for approximately one month. It's due to close on Thursday, April 23rd. I've posted the position on our district website, Olas, Zanies, the Rensselaer County Chamber of Commerce Job Board, as well as several ads in the Times Union to gain traction. As of end of day yesterday, we have nine candidates that have applied for the position so far. Mr. Simons and I will be reviewing all of the candidate application materials on Monday, April 27th. And we do have a target interview date for the week of May 11th. I am also in the process of putting together a guideline document for remote interviewing practices and processes. Due to the unprecedented set of circumstances we are in, this will be a remote interview. I've started to I've started discussions with Mr. Goodwin, our Director of Technology, on how that might look and the best ways to go about the remote interviews. So we are in the process of moving forward with that. And at this time, we believe the remote interviews will occur on the Zoom platform.
Thanks, Marissa. Any questions for Marissa?
We will need a board member participate in that remote interview committee. So if there's a board member that would like to serve on that, it'll be one committee with myself, a board member, Marissa, and maybe some other staff, whatever is in accordance with your contracts.
But do you want, what Marissa email you if they're interested? Yes, you can do that. Okay, so if you're interested in that opportunity, I want you to email Mr. Simons and he'll get you going. Is Redson have anything?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight? Jim, you, you're up again. Do you have anything to add to your previous report?
I do not.
Very good. Mr. Simons?
One thing I do want to mention that I, that I put out to the administrators, we have, we have many, many clubs and activities that are normally operating at a high level right now. And we have given an opportunity for our club advisors to indicate to us whether they want to continue to do club activities remotely. And Marissa set up a process that we worked on with the Teachers Association officers. We sent out a form for them to fill out and to let us know if they want to continue to do that remotely. I think there are a lot of things that the clubs could be doing. And I sent out some information to our administrators based on some discussions I had with the Quanis Club, Rotary Club, the Town Supervisor, and some other groups. There are a lot of people in our neighborhoods, as well as in senior living facilities and nursing homes who are not able to have visitors right now. So one activity, and Karen helped me with this, Karen Curran, with the contacts, one activity they could be doing is creating cards and notes and sending them out to people who are either shut in in their own homes and perhaps lonely and need a check-in, or the people who can't receive visitors in our nursing homes. So just put that out there to the public. If there are people that you know and need an outreach, it's something our kids could do from home, we'll help them with the mailing or whatever is needed, do that kind of outreach. I've got my student advisory group involved in that. I reached out to them today to encourage them to send some cards to nursing homes. But there are, there are things that we also are thinking about that I know are important to the kids and important to the families. And I think, I think when the last extension of the governor was made through May 15th, a lot of us, including the superintendent, understood that decision, agree with that decision from a health and safety standpoint, but also are quite disappointed that some of the spring activities that normally our kids participate in, including our seniors with prom, graduation, and all of the celebrations that occur, really at all levels, are likely not going to happen, or at least not happen in the same fashion. So we'll be working with Mr. Harkins Committee, see what we can do to have the best celebrations that we can, the best activities that we can. I will probably at May 6th, board meeting, have more specifics about what our backup plans are, everything such as graduation. Certainly, if CDC and state guidelines permit, some level of physical graduation where kids could potentially gather in small groups with multiple ceremonies, practicing social distancing, that might be an option. But we have to take a look at these things. The kids are doing a great job, the staff is doing a great job, our families are doing a great job, but the kids aren't missing. Thanks, Jeff.
Moving on to our agenda minutes, we have none at this time. Regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any comments or questions for members? If not, I need a motion to approve that. Michelle, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we're going on to reports and presentations of the superintendent. This has to do with the Questar Bosie's board election, the admin budget, and the cooperative services agreement.
So each year, when we're having a meeting on Tuesday, the Boards of Education, the whole of the districts and the state meet on the same day to vote on the budget vote and board election. And in this case, it is the administrative budget that the board votes on, as well as the election of four board candidates. It was an annual meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was held in Moby. It was well done to Dr. Cruz, the District Superintendent of the Questar, outlined the administrative budget. We recommend approval. It is a tight budget and sound budget, and we recommend approval. You have an opportunity to vote on four candidates.
So we'll take each of those items one at a time. So the first one, item A, is the election. Any questions regarding those candidates? There's four positions and four candidates. We'll do separate votes on each of the items. So if there's no questions, I need a motion to vote for those board members that are put forth. Kathleen, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item one, item A is approved. The second item is the administrator budget. And I think, as Jeff mentioned, this is close to a contingency budget, I believe. So any questions regarding the administrative budget? No? If not, I need a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. John, all those in favor? I see everybody. Anybody opposed? No? That's approved. And then finally, is the cooperative services agreement? Any questions on those services that we purchased from the Questar three Bosies? No? Need a motion to approve that? Michelle, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's approved. Thanks, everybody. So we'll move on to our agenda. Any other comments, Jeff, regarding that? Sorry, Jennifer? No? Next on our agenda, table motion, we have none at this time. Old business, board members, anything to bring up from past? Now moving to the consent agenda, items A through J. Any comments and questions on any of those items at this point? I know we have a couple retirements on there, three, I think. Board members, any? Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the sports club and the Rotary and the donations, again, very generous to support our school and our community for our students. If there's no other comments or questions, I need a motion to approve consent agenda, items A through J. Kathleen, second. John, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's approved. Thank you very much. Board, let's see, new business, board members, anything new to bring up this time? No? A lot of head shaking, no? Public forum number two, anything, Jeff, come up on the emails?
Any further? There is a message, public comment from Drew Romanowski, who is our president of our East Green Bush Teachers Association. Nice to meet you. Do I have to turn this way?
So we have, a public comment from Drew Romanowski, ETA president.
My name is Drew Romanowski, President of the East Green Bush Teachers Association. My message tonight is perhaps the simplest one I have shared in my three years in the position. Perhaps one of the most important ones, simply put, thank you. Thank you to each of you who volunteer your time to serve on the Board of Education. Thank you to Mr. Simons, thank you to Mr. Edson, thank you to Mr. McHugh, thank you to Ms. Cannon, our administrators and our support staff. I'd like to personally thank each and every one of you for your support for our students and our teachers through these challenging times. Thank you, Mr. Well, further uncertainty lies ahead. It is my genuine hope that we continue to work collaboratively to overcome the unforeseen challenges and await each of us in our roles respectfully submitted through Romanowski.
Thanks, Mr. Romanowski. We appreciate those comments. If there's no other public comments, move to board forum. Any comments, board members? On the agenda, items that came up?
I just want to thank Jeff and the student advisory committee and everybody who was looking out for some of our geriatric population. So thanks for that. I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? I just want to say, you know, it's the student council. I know it does seem Lily and Katie up there and all the things that they're trying to keep their peers connected. It's wonderful to see. You know, social media is a big part of their lives. I think they've adapted the best they can to the situation in trying to stay connected as a class and with their peers through all those different means. And it is so important, like, I would love to be able to do something, you know, in terms of graduation and doing something that they've probably been looking forward to for a long time, but we'll do our best to can, but we can't, to work with our parents and our students to give them the celebration that they deserve so much within this school year. So that's all I have. If, any final comments?
There's a gentleman sitting right here, Peter Goodwin, who's like the Wizard of Oz behind the curtains. As all of this online, remote learning, as well as remote meetings is going on, Peter, with the help of a very small crew, has been making it happen. Hours and hours, 24/7, Peter Goodwin has been working on this. And so I don't want to forget that our ability to connect with one another, our kids' ability to connect with their teachers, the curriculum that's been re-formatted in a hurry, provided online, there's a lot that goes on behind that. It's really Peter's work. And I want to just ask everybody from wherever you are, give Peter Goodwin a round of applause. Thank you very much.
And we also have keys going on for, we appreciate her coming in, take the minutes. So with that, we do have need for an executive session for persons of collective bargaining and personnel matters. What we're going to do is same time, same thing we did last time, board members, there will be a pause. Mr. Goodwin is going to send another email communication to you to connect again. And then we'll go from there. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Jennifer, I need a second. Joanne, all those in favor? Like everybody, so thanks, everybody, for coming virtually. I want to thank our community for tuning in. Those of you who listen, they can see the recording on our website as well. And we appreciate your involvement and hope to see you out there soon. Take care. Have a great night. Thanks.
He was going to send another link, right?